It's five thirty, we'll call the meeting to order if you would join us for invocation and flag salute please.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for this opportunity to come together, improve our community. Please bless our citizens and our city leadership and give this committee guidance and understanding in all matters discussed in your name.
Will please stand for the flag salute please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the love of the British Union, one nation under God, with liberty and with justice.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Commissioner Holder? Commissioner Kerr?
Here.
Commissioner Horner?
Here.
Vice Chairman Knight?
Here.
Chairman Jackson?
Here. First order of business under consent items, one A, consideration approval of minutes of the November fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting. We have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second call for a vote please.
Commissioner Holder? Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Horner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knight?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes. Under the public hearings portion, three A, consideration of possible approval of the replat request for property located near West Pine Street and North Fourth. Mr. Cottrell, what you got?
Almost forgot, I was supposed to be presenting these. This is one that y'all had reviewed last month, or last meeting, I believe it just, we needed to fix the publication and everything on the notices. So other than that, nothing has changed. This will be a final plat, they won't be returning. I know that's a preliminary plat, but this is a one and done on this, so.
Any questions for staff? I know the applicants here again, apologize, good to see you. Is there anything you'd like to add? Thanks. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against? Any discussion?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, call for a vote please.
Commissioner Holder?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Horner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knight?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes. Mr. Sterling, thank you again, appreciate it. Three B, consideration of possible approval of rezon request for property located on Cemetery Road.
Yeah, this property, to get a more exact location, says directly north of the cemetery, right before that creek that runs through there. The applicant approached staff with the desire to rezone in order to do a modular home subdivision, or manufactured home subdivision, which will consist of roughly eighty-eight lots ranging from five thousand to twelve hundred square, or twelve thousand square feet, with a frontage of the, smallest frontage being fifty feet. Applicant has expressed that these homes will be sold as a single-family dwellings and a buffer would be installed to separate the subdivision from the road itself. This one was probably the lengthiest conversation in the tack meeting. There were several staff members that were on the fence about it, believed it was probably, that did believe that it was probably the best that area was gonna get. That land sat for a long time and nobody's shown a lot of interest, but overall, staff recommendation was to deny. They believed that it was, didn't meet the current or future land use and would set a bad precedent moving forward for other rezones of this nature. With that, I know the applicant would like to get up and say some things here.
Thank you ladies and gentlemen for your time. My name is Alex Nolan, I just wanted to talk to a few others. I understand that the current future land use was the low-density R1 usage. In order to do that, again, and I'd like to modify this, after our engineers have looked at it, it is no longer eighty-eight lots due to a massive gas easement that runs directly up the guts of the property as well as flood zone. So right now, the maximum that we can do is sixty. Now, if we do the low-density, that's currently zoned for R1, and we do stick-built homes, the max we could possibly do would be forty homes. That would make, with infrastructure costs, getting sewage to the property, and everything involved in setting that up, just in the land purchase, each lot would cost fifty-three thousand dollars. If we did a stick-built home, okay, eighteen-hundred-square-foot home, four-hundred-and-fifty-square-feet for a two-car garage, at a hundred-and-thirty dollars a square feet, the cost of that home with the land would be three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. That is without profit, without anything. Now, that's not affordable housing. If you do a standard markup of twenty-five percent, this is before sales costs, before financing costs, that home's gonna be four-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars. So a single-family residence is gonna cost four-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars if it's single-family, low-density housing. That means someone's gonna have to make seventy-eight thousand dollars a year, a household. The average household income here is sixty-five thousand. So that is not affordable housing. It's not possible. Even if I were to do that though, and I had to finance it and then pay selling costs, my profit margin would be seven percent. No developer on the planet would do that because of the opportunity costs. So that land will sit, if it remains with its current zoning, because they can't do it, it's not viable financially. So our properties will vary in price from two-fifty to three-hundred thousand. That means that someone with fifty thousand dollars in household income can afford the home. These homes are, this is not a trailer park community. Every single home, it'll be a homeowner, it'll be a landowner, it'll have an HOA, it'll be a community of landowners and homeowners. It's not a trailer park that you see on COPS. These are not the communities we built. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, Mike Owens, thank you for entertaining us tonight and listening to us, and my partner here is great with numbers, he's the finance guy. I'm more of the realistic guy. I know exactly what you guys are thinking, you're gonna have another crack neighborhood over there on the other side of the tracks. I'm telling you, I don't know what the police will allow or won't allow, but I know with the HOA and the CCRs, the proper CCRs, with every single home being new, with a nice brick masonry fence around it, with, I'll put gates in, I'll put a park in, I'll do whatever you guys want to make this happen. At the end of the day, there's only so much money in this community that they can afford. And what we're trying to bring is a nice, affordable community that is monitored, that is kept clean, that is fined, and there will not be one single rent unit in the place. Every single one of those people will own their home, and hopefully, that will generate some pride in the community. It is what it is. You guys know it and I know it. It's affordable housing. We will dress it up and put authoritative HOA CCRs on it, where people will not be allowed to do this or do that. Everything will have landscape, it will all, it will be as nice as it can possibly be. And just because you change the zoning tonight, doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna approve our presentation and our layout and what we're gonna do, right? This is just the first step. I would also argue that somebody told us, that I heard, you know, hey, if we let you do it, then everybody's gonna wanna do it. And I would argue this, you guys are the authority. You're the ones that get to decide what gets done and what doesn't. And that particular piece of property is ideal for what it is, because where it's located, people who can afford more aren't gonna wanna live there. And the next person that comes around and says, hey, I wanna do what those guys did, you can say, hey, find a place where nobody else wants to build, and we'll let you do it, 'cause that's what these guys did. Y'all have the authority. That's all I'm, that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you. Paul, I did have a question, staff, I didn't see, I guess it's just you here tonight, so I'll ask, I'll ask you.
I've been left on an island today.
Seemed like there were maybe some utility concerns, or concerns about capacity and those things, was that discussed?
Um, I don't know right off my, the top of my head, I'm not sure. What is it?
Yeah, so we'll be installing.
I'm sorry, we're recording, would you come to the mic for us? Thanks.
Yes, I apologize. We spoke with your waste management and it'll cost us about five-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars to get to the tie-in and put the pump stations in. Part of the HOA is gonna cover the maintenance of that, 'cause we were told the city will not cover the maintenance of that. So that's part of the lot cost at fifty-four thousand dollars a lot.
Before you, before you walk off?
Yes.
And what's the press point on these houses?
So again, it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to three-hundred thousand is the price point. So it puts the affordability at the, at two-seventy-five at about a household income of fifty thousand dollars. I also do the financing for the residential side, to the end consumers, and so that's with current market rates. And that's an FHA loan, which these will be allowed because they're not chattel, they're actual real property that they're buying. And so that'll, that'll make the affordability about fifty thousand.
Have you done one of these communities before?
Yes.
How many? Where at?
Mike, you wanna take the reins on that one?
So, so, so the reality is, I've got one large one in Ferris, Texas, and we were subject to septic systems, and so they're one-acre lots. But it's still a forty-nine house development, it's in Ferris, Texas, it's called Ferris Ranch, you can look up ferrisranch.com and it'll take you right to it. I do several other smaller ones around Texas. The reality of it is, is that manufactured homes, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, require septic. And if you're gonna get a septic system, you require a half-acre lot. In this particular instance, this is what makes it attractive to us, is because, yes, it's five-hundred thousand dollars, but if you, for, for, for the grinder, for the, for the, everything to tie into your, to your current system, right? But a septic tank and aerobic septic system is eighty-two hundred dollars. So if you multiply sixty times eighty-two hundred, and we don't know, we don't have the engineer laying out the final lot count. It might be fifty-five houses, it might be sixty-two. This is his rough guesstimate. I told him, don't spend any more money until we get past these folks here and at least get it rezoned, then we'll put our presentation together about what we wanna do. If we get denied after that, then we get denied after that. But this is the first step, and so.
Luckily, the lot is close enough to the tie-in that it is financially viable for us.
Because it's, because for us, five-hundred thousand dollars is cheaper than eight thousand times sixty. I mean, it's just, it's just math, but.
What's the square footage on these homes?
So I'm gonna put as big a home as the lot will allow for me to be out there. If I can put a two-thousand-square-foot house on that, on that property, I will put a two-thousand-square-foot house on that property. It depends on your easements and what is allowed by.
None of them will be single wides?
No, they'll all be double wides. Every one of them will be double wides, they'll all be engineered, they'll all be, it's not. When he said it's not a conventional trailer park, I, we were having conversations, I'm just gonna get gut-level. Just relax, Francis. He's worried I'm gonna ruin it, because I'm, I'm the guy in the dirt, you know what I mean, and I just talk straight up. Mobile home parks are single wides stacked on top of each other. They're stacked on top of each other. I don't know how big these lots are versus the square footage of a, of a double wide, but if I can put a double wide in there and put a nice, modern aluminum type of carport on top of it and make it look pretty, that's exactly what I'm gonna do, because I'm putting two million dollars in this thing, and I have to get the people of Durant to like what I'm selling and have it appeal to them so that they wanna live there, so that they have pride, and so that they tell their next neighbor and their next neighbor, hey, man, this is a great community. Yes, there's an HOA, and we don't like, we don't cut into HOAs, people telling us how we gotta live, but at the same time, we don't want a trashy neighborhood, right?
And that's two million before we put houses on it?
Before I put houses on it.
Right, so it's two-point-one-two-two million.
Exactly. So I, I, I mean, I'm here before you, you know, willing to take a risk and believe in the, in the, in the people of Durant, the people that work in those casinos and these stores and these dispensaries that don't make, what'd you say, fifty-five thousand dollars a year? They need a place to live, they're commuting from wherever, way out, they're probably going down to that country store and they could be spending money right here. I know you don't have income tax, I lived in Oklahoma, I lived in Broken Bow for a, for a while. Tell you what, I saw some things down there in Eagle Town.
The household income being about sixty-three to sixty-five thousand dollars aligns with, with the need for this affordable housing, and I think this fits that perfectly.
I'm not building junk, and I'm not allowing people to bring old mobile homes in. Every single home will be brand-new. There won't be any vinyl siding, there won't be any metal siding, it'll all be smart panel. People will have to paint their homes, just like anybody else does. They're gonna have a landscape package. We'll be putting concrete streets in, not asphalt, not Caliche. They'll be concrete, the drives, if I can get away with it, might be asphalt, but the streets will be concrete. It'll be a nice-looking, it'll be a nice-looking park.
The goal with the community is pride and ownership. It's true homeownership, it's real property.
Nameplate out in the front, the whole nine yards. We're not talking about putting up some little, little sign and, you know.
Who, who holds the HOA?
We'll hold it until.
We, we meaning?
The developers.
The developer.
It will sit with us to be managed and maintained to ensure its continuity until it fills up to ninety-five percent.
And then we'll, then we'll turn it over.
And then we have, yeah, we would turn it over.
We would turn it over, I can't maintain it forever.
Yeah, I understand, but the homeowners don't have to maintain it forever either.
Yes, they will, because their sewer will not be maintained by the city.
Unless the city approves that.
Unless the city wants to take over the sewer, they have to maintain the HOA, or they're not gonna be able to use the bathroom.
But, but passive resistance with HOA.
What portion of this property is floodplain?
About an acre.
Yeah.
On the north side.
It's a total non-buildable due to the.
We're gonna, I'm gonna put a playground in there. I'm gonna put a playground in there for the kids to play on.
Yeah, total non-buildable due to the easement and floodplain is six acres of the twenty-five.
No, 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 six acres with the gas line.
That's what I said.
Okay, got you, got you. Yeah, with the gas line, which you can't build anything on, you can't do anything with it, which is another barrier for a, for a standard stick and mortar builder.
It limits the, the low-density at forty homes per our engineers, and so with us, it's a max of sixty.
Not to mention.
Not the eighty-eight that we originally.
Not, not to mention, it, it's priced out of the range if you do the stick and mortar.
Yes, yeah, it becomes not affordable, unfortunately, at stick-built.
So, so what is, what is the sell on a high-density neighborhood next to park space, city space? We've, we've got a, we've got a future land use of low-density here with, with parks and the cemetery and a, and a sports complex across the street. What's the sell on a high-density neighborhood fitting, fitting appropriately here?
The, go ahead.
My opinion, yes. So the sale is, is right now, to have a new home that's affordable and sizable, is not really an option. And so the sale is, is, your community's growing tremendously, and housing's a need, and affordable housing doesn't exist in the non-pre-owned space. So it's, it's out of necessity, and, and the fact that it's, it's a beautiful space and it's real property, instead of the alternative, which is the rented lots.
It will be a beautiful space.
It will be.
Not necessarily right now at this moment, but it will be.
I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, it, I mean, yeah. I mean, when you drive by this thing, you're gonna see shingles, you're not gonna see metal roofs, you're gonna see brick fence all the way around. I'm happy to put drive-gates in, you're gonna see a nice brass or powder-coated, pretty name on the front of it. Driving by, it's gonna look fantastic.
There's a big difference in a community that's all brand-new, mobile homes, especially when they're built to the standard that the new homes are, versus the single-wide mismatched, where it's all different colors.
On COPS.
And the roads, it's a, it's a stark contrast, and it's actually beautiful.
They've got some nice ones that have been going up in the suburbs around Dallas and DFW, and I look at them and I'm going.
Florida as well.
I'm like, man, you know, and I, even my daughter, she's renting a house in Dallas, paying two thousand dollars a month, and I told her, I said, you're renting, you're renting, you're not, you don't own the land, you don't own the home. I would rather you be in that mobile home park in that, in that manufactured community over there in Princeton, gaining some equity, and then five years from now, you wanna graduate out of it, sell it, you got thirty, forty thousand dollars you can go put down.
I, I think the beauty of what we do is, we're also very passionate about it. We believe that the homes and the quality of the homes now are far, far different than the homes in the seventies and eighties.
The, the bottom line is, and I'm, I'm conservative, I'm conservative. But the reality of it is, the gap between the rich and the poor, it grows daily. It grows daily. And people at the bottom, they can't afford a home anymore. They just can't. And those mobile home parks that you see on TV, where the cops are beating in the doors, those are all rental properties too. They don't own those properties. They got some guy getting rich off rent, off every one of them. The lots might be small, but these people are gonna own a home. They can do with whatever the hell they want.
I do appreciate, I do appreciate your investment and your interest in Durant.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, and you may have already answered this, but are y'all selling lots or y'all selling the homes?
The lots with the home is real property, so they qualify for VA, FHA.
But y'all are facilitating?
So we're spec-homing them. So we are putting the money upfront, building a home, and then selling that home. Just like you would see in, yes, just like you would see in any community. It is, it is a purchase of a home that we have built out already, so we've placed it. And the beauty about these is, is we can build this community relatively quickly. If we did stick build, we could only do three to five at a time, and so it would take a couple of years to fill that full community, which I don't think is the timeline that you guys need for affordable housing either. I mean, you're talking easily three-plus years to build out that full community.
I thought I heard your question is, will they own the land? They'll own the land and the home.
We're not selling the lots separate, by themselves. No, the intent is to never do that. We want to maintain the vision here, and the only way to do that is if we spec-hem.
We control it. You do have it.
Yeah.
If we sold the land, then anybody would be able to bring in a piece of junk. We're not allowing that.
Yeah.
Every single home is brand-new with the land.
Any other questions for the applicants?
And, and we're happy, we're happy as part of the, as part of the approval package, which is the next step, the engineer drawings, the, 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 all of the stuff. We'll put a, a, a copy of the CCRs in front of you, if you want, so that you can see how the, the development will be maintained, what the rules and regulations are. You guys are the bosses. You're, you're the ones that can set up what we have to, what hurdles we have to cross, right? You wanna know how it's gonna be maintained, you wanna know how it's gonna look, you put those hurdles in front of us, we'll clear them. Clear them.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against? Is there a discussion?
I'm gonna be honest, I hate it. I just, I hate it. We, we don't have any R4 really at all in the city at this point. I don't necessarily have a problem with their project and what they're proposing. My concern is, we've gotten burnt on rezoning things, and then companies have immediately sold the property to somebody else who did whatever they wanted to do with it. So that's my issue here. It's not necessarily with what they're proposing. I'm gonna be honest, I don't, I don't think they're gonna sell houses at that price point for manufactured homes in this area, but I could be wrong. I mean, the market may support it, I don't know, not a real estate agent, so maybe, but I just, we've gotten burned a lot on rezoning things and doing proposals, and then somebody else comes along, they sell the property, and somebody else does whatever they wanna do with it. So that's, that's kinda my beef with this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add to that. You know, in terms of the affordable, you know, housing conversation, you know, I'm aware of multiple new offerings, stick pilt, brick, three-two with garage, two-thirty and below, so I don't know that that's gonna be competitive. Secondly, I will say, I don't, I don't think that this is the location for R4. We're jumping from, from R1, I think that's too much of a leap, and this isn't the area to do it with.
I, I would like to have gotten on board. I think the, the best use for that part of the community, that part would be something like this. I would like to have seen what y'all have done in the past. Looking at Ferris Acres, that's, I guess, still under development.
The website hasn't been maintained like it should because they sold so fast.
Yeah.
There's three ounces left in that building.
Okay. I'd like to see what you're doing before I get on board and see what, what you're bringing to the community. I don't wanna like, Whitney, I don't wanna take any guesses. So this is our community too, and we wanna make sure that what's coming is what we expect.
Are you suggesting, maybe we put together a presentation on the things that we've done too fast and reschedule and bring that to the table?
I'm saying that would help, for me. May not be help for the rest of the individuals, but it would help for me.
I, I would propose that question to him now, because some of the comments seem adamant that they don't want it to be R1, and it could be a waste of time. If it's, I mean, R4, if it's not, if that could change anybody's mind, then we would, again, go through those motions.
So I will, I will say, we're an advisory board, we're not, we're not the ones making the final call, that's the city. I would suggest that maybe, whatever our answer is, this is gonna go to the city, that might be something you would wanna bring and present to the city for them to decide what they wanna do, but we are.
Appeal or?
We are purely advisory.
Next week will be the city council for this. Their, their recommendation body, council makes the final denial or approval next Tuesday.
I think I would echo that. I think that would be helpful for city council to see as a part of your presentation. And that way, if you present to them, it won't hold up your process as well.
I, I, I agree with what all of you guys have said. Um, I, I think R-four is a hard sell inside the city. I mean, almost impossible in my opinion. Um... And I understand, I understand what you're saying about making it nicer and I have no, I have no doubts that what you might do would look nice. Um... But we've gotta think about what it's gonna do twenty-five years from now as well. Um, when you guys are gone, the HOA is disbanded and then, then what are we left with? I, I, I don't think something that dense next to all that open space and park space is the right fit in general for the community. I like what you're trying to do. I just don't know that this is the spot for it.
Might I ask, um, so, so from an affordability perspective, right, and even trying to build there, given the limited lot amounts, if it were hundreds of lots, yes, it could be built at far, far less expensive. Uh, but from an affordability perspective, I, even from an opportunity cost perspective, I don't see how anybody would ever invest if their return on a home is seven percent there. It just, no one's gonna build there. So it, it's very likely, almost certain, that that will remain a need.
If you're thirty thousand dollars for a stick-built house, I mean, where does that come from?
Well, but again, that's, that's the comment scale.
Guys, if you don't mind, we, we can take this conversation offline and if you want some examples, be happy to provide that, but... Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I was the mouthy one, so I'll make a motion to deny.
I'll second. Is there, we have a motion and a second. Call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Holder? Yes or no?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Horner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knight?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes.
Lucky.
Yeah. So again, this is just a recommending board. Uh, city council will hear this, uh, a week from today at six o'clock.
Thank you.
Same place, yeah. Moving to three C consideration and possible approval of preliminary plat request, uh, for property located near Linden Woods Drive and First Avenue.
Uh, this is the second phase of single-family on Linden Woods. Uh, they have included, I don't know if y'all recall, that emergency access road that we had debated that was gonna tie back in around will now be a city street. Um, there you go. It'll come back down and tie into that bottom road there and the retention pond will be moved. Overall, everybody's looked at this and, uh, was okay with this one. The only hiccup is, and I think the applicant's here to discuss it, is we had received some deficiencies from DEQ that needed to be addressed out there and staff recommended that all phases be on hold until those deficiencies are addressed and taken care of, so...
Paul, I have a, I have a couple of questions for you. So just on the, on the packet, it says, um, replat, but then on the consideration, it, it discusses R-four. This is not considering a rezoned R-four. It's just a plat, right?
Yeah, this is just a plat for this one. Where does it say R-four on there?
I'll be honest, I'll be honest with you. I read the R-four and just immediately quit looking because I knew I wasn't going to approve it. So if that's, if that's a typo, then that's...
Yeah, it's a typo.
Okay.
Definitely a typo.
Thanks. I, I figured it probably was, but I wanted to make that clear before we got too far ahead that we're just looking at a preliminary plat?
Just a preliminary plat for single-family phase two.
And so my question on the DEQ concern, um, I understand that there was a, a deficiency. If I read it correctly, is that a deficiency per, just for the application or are you talking about existing?
The deficiencies, and I just briefly read through them, they were more of a Philip High, they were sent to Philip Hightower. I think most of them were around water and lift stations, stuff of that nature, so I'm not real familiar with it.
Well, I read the DEQ letter and that, uh, you know, had some follow-up questions for them and had some recommended changes.
Yeah.
Uh, but there wasn't any, you know, deficiencies outside of the application with, you know, the, the project itself.
Yeah, and I know that I had seen one a while back, uh, and then I got another one Friday while I was tapping up, or not Friday, but Wednesday, when I was tapping up the staff report that included another thirteen, so...
So when staff is, is discussing this, uh, again, we're looking at preliminary, not final. Um, I understand that DEQ is wanting to follow up with some answers, uh, you know, changing how the, you know, the manholes are lined, uh, you know, but again, we're at, we're at a planning stage. Um, I can understand wanting to hold them up if it was a final plat. Uh, can you help me understand why we need to hold it up being a preliminary?
I can't. That was just something that was passed down from me, so, or to me on this, so...
And I'm, I'm, I would, I would love for you to, you know, educate me. It looked like DEQ just had some follow-up questions, basically, so...
And that may be all it was. Like I said, originally when I was typing this up, I was, I loved this plan. I thought everything checked out, looked good, you know, overall, definitely recommend approval. Like I said, I was, I was outvoted on it on the, on the overall recommendation, so...
Okay. Well, we may see if some of the other members have some things to add on that when we get to the, that portion, but I wanted to give a chance for staff to help me out on that one.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to speak? Thanks. If you would come to my, can state your name for us.
Yes, Ryan Hackett. Glad to be here again. So amazing that Durant is growing so much and, and all, everybody's fighting to build housing here. It's fantastic. I wish we were here for a final plat, which means we would have already had the road installed and the water and sewer installed as well. So, um, we are, we are not here for that today and I can't unfortunately report that, hey, we've progressed that far partly because of those, some of those DEQ comments that you've, that you were talking about. Um, so we totally agreed that, and we, and it was, and it was a correct forethought to have an access road, the emergency access road, uh, which we are totally prepared to put in still with that first phase that has been preliminary approved. The reason that it's not in is because we have been working with staff, with city staff, on the water and sewer, uh, requirements and, um, outlay there. Um, what happens there is that we send in their plans to the city and then, a- as well as to the DEQ. So I think the question was good. It says it's a notice of deficiencies, but they're not really deficiencies. This is a normal plan review. Our engineer sent the, sent the plans, uh, and DEQ says, hey, we, um, I could read one of them. Um, our review is a little bit bigger, so you owe us another three hundred and fifty-three dollars to pay. Okay, we, you know, we pay those kinda things. Hey, we'd like to, uh, we'd like you to show, you know, instead of brick manholes, we have to have something other than brick manholes. You know, there's a couple of different ways to skin the cat when you're doing some of these infrastructures, when you're building homes and things like that, and we try to, our interpretation of the codes are sometimes a little different than some other people's interpretations of the codes or preferences. There's lots of different manufacturers out there for some of these materials. And so we just have to provide those specifications. The, 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 the plan review that DEQ has come back to i- i- is just some of their, um, interpret, not even interpretations, what they would like to more, see more of. Hey, would you send us a specification on the generator for the lift station? Would you, you know, make a couple of extra notes on the plans? And that's what that is. That's a normal plan review and that's what we're in the process of doing. We're just waiting for one more specification from the manufacturer of one of these components to include in this and the, and the, and then we're confident that the DEQ will approve the plans. And these plans are not only for the second phase, but they are also for the first phase. It's kind of, it's kind of grown at this point. Um, because the sewer is downhill, it's downhill, downhill at the, you know, by the access, by the road down at the south. And so, um, we have to get that approved before we can put in the first phase. So all of these things are just kinda, it's kind of going around in circles and it's just taken us just a little bit longer uh, to get, to understand how the city wanted us to, where they wanted us to tap into the water and some of the other requirements. And finally, we're there. And so, uh, the good news is that we have the financing on the second phase. So the preliminary plat is a request to be able to move forward with the plan, which we're already kind of doing in, uh, as well for the first phase. Because it's kind of grown into one submittal for the first and the second phase because all of the sewer is... The, the, the first phase has to run off the same sewer as the second phase. So they're just kinda tagging, it's just kind of following along with that. And the water, the water line does loop only in the first phase, but they won't approve the water line until the sewer is also approved. So it's this chicken and egg kinda thing that we're running around doing and we're, we're finally there with the submission. Now, this week, we'll be re-submitting back to the DEQ, so there's not really a reason to hold up the preliminary plat, which just means, hey, yeah, we think that another twenty homes along the street that we're already going to build along, you know, that already, will, will, that will already utilize the utilities that we're already going to put in for the first phase is a bad thing. I think that's what, more of what you're, of what you're approving or recommending approval for i- in this plat application. Because we were already going to put in the road, we were already going to put in the, the sewer system, we're already going to put in the water. What the second, what this one does, this allows us to actually loop the water, um, because now we're financing the second phase as well, uh, which is another good thing, I think, for the water system as well. So I know that there was some questions about the deficiencies. I don't think, uh, there was anything. I went over them in detail with my, you know, with my engineer because the city doesn't, the city doesn't design the system, they just approve the system and we bring it to them with their requirements. And so this is just a really normal process. I asked him if there was anything of concern and he said, "No, there's nothing of a concern. We just missed a couple of notes. They wanted a couple of clarifications on the specifications." Uh, I've been, he's been over it with the DEQ reviewer and it's ready to go as soon as we just get one more specification from one of the manufacturers. We'll turn it in again this week. Comes to the city because they're kind of the applicant of, of the system, really, to DEQ. That's why, that's why you're seeing these kind of things. So, um, yeah, we feel like it's great, a great addition. We have, uh, we were able to submit another, you know, application for the financing that's similar to the first phase of financing, so we're, we're ready to go. We're really, uh, the, the, we've been spending the time grading the site, um, and the road is cut in. It just, it just needs to get the water and sewer approved in order to finalize that. We'll, and then we'll be back here for a final plat and we'll say, "It's in, you know, the road's in, the water and sewer in. We're ready to build homes. If you'd, uh, please help us with a final plat, that'd be great and we'll start with building permits and get moving on that part of it, but we're very anxious to keep this going." And it, and it has, it has taken a little bit longer just because, um, just some back and forth with the city on, on their utility requirements. That's what it's really been for this whole time. Because we're totally ready, we would have the road paved, but we wanna make sure that those waters, the water and sewer are under those, you know, under the right places. It's really what's happening.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Any questions for the applicant? I wanted to clarify just one statement. I know that you were working to clarify some of these things for DEQ. Was that something that, uh, we could probably have clarified by city council in a week or probably longer?
Well, it will be, it will, it'll go back in and hopefully DEQ can turn it around really quickly, but, uh, I don't think that'll be in a week. It might take a couple of weeks to get back. Um, we're obviously, uh, pursuing their review quickly, but at the same time, they're not just doing... We're not the only customer, unfortunately. We wish we were. And thanks for asking. We're not rezoning. This is all under the R-three guidelines. In fact, we, this is a down zone from where the, the R-three allows, right? We've done multi, multi-family there as well and those are, those, those are just going through punch lists and are, and are finalizing and, uh, we're seeing great success in leasing those up. We know there's demand for these things. So, um, we're excited to be able to kinda move forward on the, on the single-family part of it. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone who wants to speak for or against? Is there any discussion?
I, I mean, looking at this from a plating perspective and, and it being a preliminary plat, I, I think the plat itself looks good. Now, I, I just read through the DEQ comments as we were sitting here, but, and, and I agree, they're just plan review comments, um, from my viewpoint. But, but from a preliminary plat standpoint, I, I think this is a good solution for that, that road.
Buddy, did you have any concerns?
No, I'm, I'm fine with the plat as soon as the DEQ stuff's done and it won't take long. I don't see, I didn't see anything wrong with it.
Good, thanks. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Holder?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Horner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knight?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes. Again, recommending board, city council will be next week. Three D consideration and possible approval of replat request for property located near West Mulberry Street and North Eleventh.
Yeah, and this is replat, but it will actually be a, a lot, intend to split into two lots. Um, one will be facing, where does my, one will be facing Mulberry Street and the other will be a duplex facing North Eleventh. Um, they intend to, from my understanding, one, single-family and one duplex. Is that correct, Brad?
That's correct.
And the applicant obviously is here if y'all have any questions for him. Um, with that, we'll take questions.
Any questions for staff? The applicant like to speak? If you would, state your name for us. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Brad Acock. I'm, uh, here representing the, uh, property owner. Um, I, I don't really have anything to say. I would just, it's, it's pretty straightforward. Um, I think it, uh, matches up with the area, both the single-family and the duplex. The zoning is already compatible with, uh, both of those and, uh, there's plenty of room for ingress egress. Um, we determined that was gonna be the highest and best use of the property and so, um, if you've got any questions, uh, let's just start there.
Any questions for the applicant? Doesn't look like it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone who wants to speak for or against? Any discussion? Or a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Holder? Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Horner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knight?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes. Thank you. Three D consideration and possible approval of conditional use permit requested for property located near Goad Industrial Boulevard.
Yeah, I put near, this will actually be a unit built on that boulevard, that area that they'll go to come in and replatted and rezoned and, or I don't know if you rezoned it, this was kinda before my time. Um, current zoning's I-one, future land use shows mixed and commercial. Uh, the applicant is wanting to do a CrossFit gym. This was another one where there was a little bit of back and forth discussion in the tack meeting. First off, explaining to some what a CrossFit gym was and how that, that panned out and how it's not a traditional gym and this is kind of the area that these are tr- you know, traditionally seen. Um, after a little while, overall staff recommendation was to approve the CUP. M and O did state that they're unsure if the current sewer can handle the flow, but I didn't get any more detail in that, so... And the applicant is also here if there's any questions.
There's only three toilets in the whole building, so I don't know. I mean, that'd be a pretty small sewer line not to be able to hold that.
Yeah, these will be really sm- small classes scheduled throughout the day. It's not gonna be a traditional gym where there's forty people there constantly, twenty-four, seven, you know, so...
Questions for staff?
My question ain't about the gym being there. I think the gym being in there is fine. My question's about the... My question ain't about the gym being there. I think the gym being in there is fine. My question's about the... I went out there during a rain, and the property don't look like it's gonna drain whatsoever.
Well, I don't think they've done anything on the property, or like, as far as the lots go, to work those over. I don't know what that plan looks like. I think as of right now, they just got the street in out there. Um, but that's all I can speak on, on that, so.
That's the only comment I had.
Do you know if we have that drainage study?
I do not, no.
Would you mind following up on that?
Yeah.
Just making a note and-
Randy, will you make a note of that, please?
Maybe at least have that ready for council.
I would think we do, or they wouldn't have built the street without the grading and drainage. So, I would think we've got that on file.
I know that Aaron, our street superintendent, has been out there quite a bit and talking with superintendent on site, but as far as what that, those conversations look like and what all they've received, I can't speak on it too much.
It might be a, a nice just, uh, point to communicate, when, do we, do we have that on file, and, you know, have we verified that's been done?
Yeah, and I'll make sure we do that before next Tuesday.
Just as a follow-up for them. Any other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to speak? Any questions for the applicant? Is there anyone who wants to speak for or against? Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Call for a vote, please.
Commissioner Holder?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Horner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knight?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes.
Again, it's, it's approved by us by the recommending board. City Council will hear it a week from today. Yeah, thanks. Oh, do we have any new business?
No new business.
Just one thing that I would like to add on the new business moving forward. I know we, we talked about it briefly, but, uh, you know, some of the requests and projects that we have going, I know, you know, our city manager, you know, has, uh, you know, began conversations about, uh, you know, hiring a consultant for, you know, the code rewrite. If you could give us a progress report, uh, you know, just kind of where we stand on either some of the requests that we've made, either on code rewrites, like the clarification for, um, uh, the plating process, um, you know, what progress we're making with the consultants. So, those type of things, if we could, if we could add just a progress report to new business, I'd appreciate it.
We haven't really, 'cause it'll still have to be approved and go through those steps, um, but I know that the timetable that we're looking at, there's gonna be, uh, and they'll give us ample time to be ready for that, but there's gonna be a lot of sit-down discussions with the planning commission, City Council, all to have input. Um, I believe the overall plan is to, or in my opinion, and what I would like to see is it stripped entirely down to the core and rebuilt from the ground up suited to Durant, so. But, yeah, I'll get y'all a timeline and-
Just, uh, well, if we could do just kind of a, a monthly update-
Yeah.
-as a part of the meeting, yeah, part of the survey.
And we'll just add that into the new business every month, and I'll just update as we go through that, so.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Samud.
Thank you.
Buddy, there was your chance. We've got a motion and a second. Would you call for a vote, please?
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Holder?
Yes.
Commissioner Horner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knight?
Yes.
Chairman Jackson?
Yes. Thank you all. Appreciate it.